Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call a meeting of the Lowell School Committee to honor. Please rise and join me in honoring America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Laraba. Mr. Leahy.
Present.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. We have some distinguished guests in the audience this evening. Earlier, we had a reception for our retirees, teachers, principals, and school department employees. And what I'd like to do on the special honor of business is to recognize the 2009, 2010 retirees. What I'd like to do is read everyone's name, and those that are here, if you'd like to stand, we can certainly recognize you again. But I'm going to read everybody's name into the record. With my colleagues' permit, I'll begin. Dorothy Ostie, 34 years, classroom teacher, Wang School. Sandra Beltran, 18 years, English language learner, teacher, Lowell High School. Dawn Bohm, 33 years, English teacher, Lowell High School. Cheryl Belanger, 19 years, cafeteria worker, Food Services. Susan Campbell, 18 years, school clerk, Patuckettville Memorial School. Nancy Caputi, 12 years, cafeteria worker, Food Services. Margo Chikarala, 35 years, health teacher, Daley School. Allison Corner, five year principal, Patuckettville Memorial School. Patricia Gregg, 26 years, kindergarten teacher, Maury School. Michaela Creman, 35 years, physical education teacher, Stocklosser School. Marsha Crowley, 36 years, kindergarten teacher, Riley School. Joanne Cudahy, 11 years, social worker, Special Education Department. Molly Dunnehugh, 26 years, classroom teacher, Robinson School. Joan Dunleavy, 41 years, instructional technology specialist, Patuckettville Memorial School. Manuela Flynn, 36 years, English language learner, teacher, Butler School. Ursula Gage, 16 years, science teacher, Butler School. Paula Robinson, 28 years, reading teacher, Lincoln School. Susan Gersh, 13 years, speech and language teacher, Riley School. Paul Griggois, 34 years, instructional technology specialist, Stocklosser School. Leona Giovanni, 36 years, elementary teacher, Lincoln School. Elaine Goraleo, 14 years, music teacher, Moody School. Barbara Goodridge, 39 years, adult education teacher, Adult Basic Education Program. Mary Harrington, 17 years, cafeteria worker, Food Services. Cynthia Harder, 41 years, elementary teacher, McCalliv School. Donna Janowitz, 30 years, Special Education teacher, Shaughnessy School. Mark LaPointe, 13 years, English teacher, Lowell High School. Linda Labell, 23 years, cafeteria worker, Food Services. Linda Lee, 38 years, principal, Shaughnessy School. Robert Longmire, 13 years, custodian, Pine Arts School. Sandra Longmire, four years, custodian, Pine Arts School. Ann Manning, 36 years, assistant principal, Merklin School. Diane Matty, 38 years, elementary teacher, McCalliv School. Janet McMahon, 19 years, physical education teacher, Riley School. Betty McSwigan, 35 years, math teacher, Lowell High School. Bill Menopulos, 37 years, principal, Pine Arts School. Bill, congratulations. Cheryl Merrill, 15 years, paraprofessional, Shaughnessy School. Rosemary Montblough, 14 years, cafeteria worker, Food Services. Mary Jane Mullin, 34 years, guidance council, Butler School. Eileen Nazer, 35 years, math teacher, Daley School. Charles Olender, two years, ROTC instructor, Lowell High School. Mary Jane Penatella, 17 years, elementary teacher, Shaughnessy School. Stephen Patterson, 13 years, custodian, Lowell High School. Evelyn Peters, 16 years, math teacher, Lowell High School. Brenda Price, 32 years, reading teacher, Pine Arts School. Congratulations. Dennis Rock, 15 years, library media specialist, Stocklosser School. Donna Rogers, 35 years, classroom teacher, Daley School. Joseph Salerno, 15 years, science teacher, Pine Arts School. William Samaras, 44 years, headmaster, Lowell High School. Eddie Santagati, 17 years, Academy Chair Finance Department, Lowell High School. Eddie, congratulations. Jane Souza, 21 years, paraprofessional, Lincoln School. Noella Sullivan, 14 years, cafeteria worker, Stocklosser School. Nyla Swenson, 13 years, business teacher, Lowell High School. David Thomas, 16 years, math teacher, Butler School. Elaine Trine, 25 years, elementary teacher, McCalliv School. Joseph Tukolo, 10 years, paraprofessional, Lowell High School. Louisa Vonham, 35 years, instructional technology specialist, Bartlett School. Ann Weber, 25 years, school clerk, Shaughnessy School. And Rebecca Waznuski, 38 years, reading teacher, Merklin School. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Again, on behalf of my colleagues, and Dr. Scott, and her cabinet, and the entire school department, we want to thank you for your dedicated years of service. Thank you so much. Continuing on with the agenda, the regular school committee meeting minutes of May 5, 2010. Motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Thank you. Under permission to enter, we have two items under permission to enter, but I do want to say that we need to take four roll call votes. Let me begin with the ratification of the GLU contract for building service employees. I'll read the memo from Assistant Superintendent Lang attached to the memorandums of agreement with the Greater Lowell Unionized Employees GLU pertaining to the Business Service Employees' Contract. I recommend the following ratification vote be taken at the May 19, 2010, regular meeting of the Lowell School Committee as follows. The first, to ratify the tentative agreement reached between the Lowell School Committee and the Greater Lowell Unionized Employees GLU pertaining to the Building Service Employees' Bargaining Unit, School Custodians, Security Guards, and HVAC Technician for the period from July 1, 2006 through June 30, 2009. I would like to entertain a motion to ratify the first. Motion by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Conway. Any discussion on that ratification vote? This is from July 1, 2006 through June 30, 2009. Roll call.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. The second vote, to ratify the tentative agreement reached between the Lowell School Committee and the Greater Lowell Unionized Employees GLU pertaining to the Building Service Employees Bargaining Unit, School Custodians, Security Guards, and HVAC Technician for the period from July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2011. Motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. The next item under permission to enter is the ratification of the GLU contract for food service employees. Again, I'll read the memo from Assistant Superintendent Lang attached to the memorandums of agreement with the Greater Lowell Unionized Employees pertaining to the Food Service Employees Contract. I recommend the following ratification vote be taken at the May 19, 2010, regular meeting of the Lowell School Committee as follows. The first vote, to ratify the tentative agreement reached between the Lowell School Committee and the Greater Lowell Unionized Employees pertaining to the Food Service Employees Bargaining Unit, cook managers, cafeteria employees, and drivers for the period from July 1, 2006 through June 30, 2009. The chair would entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. And the last vote, to ratify the tentative agreement reached between the Lowell School Committee and the Greater Lowell Unionized Employees pertaining to the Food Service Employees Bargaining Unit, cook managers, cafeteria employees, and drivers for the period from July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2011. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of those involved in the discussions and the negotiations over the last, well, many, many months, and I did see Attorney Hall here as well, and I want to just recognize Attorney Hall for his, his good work as well. So, again, thank you, thank you all very, very much. Moving on with the agenda, Memorials Committee is... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, no.
So, I just wanted to add one quick point.
Yes.
You know, certainly it has been many months, many years, that we've been negotiating with, with GLU. I just want to add, you know, I think that one of the key things in this, these final weeks, as we've gone through this, is that both these agreements give us real tools for savings, and I think that that's, that's a powerful thing, and I know that as we've gone through this process and, and gone back and forth, it's, it's very much appreciated that both these negotiating units were able to give us some real, powerful opportunities for savings, and I know that as a, as a body, we're certainly appreciative of it and looking forward to working together even more in the future. Thank you.
Well put. Thank you. Continuing on with the agenda, under Memorials Committee is... Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Scott.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. There's also two more permissions to enter for replacement.
Oh.
Sorry. May I proceed?
Yes. I apologize. Chair recognizes Dr. Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. Greater Lawrence Educational Collaborative, GLAC, for the amount of $23,000 to amend the existing contract to provide for the additional home-based services orientation, mobility, training, and vocational assessment of students as outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the School Department Budget Special Education Tuition Account. Another one for the Greater Lawrence Educational Collaborative, GLAC, for the amount of $30,000 to amend the existing contract to provide for the additional auto district tuition costs for 26 students plus one additional student enrolled in receiving services as outlined in their Special Education IEP. Again, paid for through the School Department Budget Special Education Tuition Account. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Any questions, comments? The chair would entertain a motion to accept by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Roll call.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. Continuing on now with the agenda, under Memorials Committee as a whole, we have John A. Anastopoulos, Anastopoulos, father of Marcus Anastopoulos Sullivan, school teacher; Edward P. Jeszek Jr., father of Joanne George, Riley School teacher; Clifford LaRitch, father of Deborah Kroposky, Lincoln School Literacy Specialist; and Mary Ann Whedon, sister of Michael Earl, United Teachers of Lowell Staff Representative and retired Lowell High School teacher; and sister-in-law of Eileen Earl, retired Robinson School teacher. Please rise in a moment of silence and dock in chambers. Any unfinished business? Hearing none. Public participation. We do have Kim Scott, who's ready to speak on the joint motion filed by Mr. Leary and Mr. Leahy. So, with permission of my colleagues, let me read the motion, and then we'll recognize Kim Scott. Motion by James Leary and John Leahy, request a superintendent to provide a report outlining the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's rationale for decreases to the Lowell Public Schools' funding during the upcoming 2010, 2011 school year versus potential increases in funding at the Greater Lowell Regional Vocational Technical High School during the same fiscal year. In addition, provide to the Lowell School Committee, the Lowell City Council, and the Lowell State Delegation suggested action steps to address the potential differences in funding during the current economic crisis. Again, we don't need a second because we have... Oh, I guess we need a suspension of the rules to allow Ms. Scott to... Motion by Ms. Laraba, seconded by Mr. Conway. All of the favors, suspension of the rules, signify by saying aye. Now, that motion is on the floor, and the chair recognizes Kim Scott. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. My name is Kim Scott, and my children attend the Lowell Public Schools, and I'm a member of Move Lowell Forward. I wanted to speak in favor of this motion by Mr. Leary and Mr. Leahy. I find it deeply, deeply upsetting that the Lowell Public Schools are potentially laying off up to 89 teachers, increasing class sizes to over 30, and eliminating clubs and athletic programs, yet the Greater Lowell Technical High School is receiving increased funding and spends a good part of it on administration salaries. According to data compiled by Move Lowell Forward from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education site, the Greater Lowell Technical High School spends $17,615 per pupil, of which $856 was administration, versus the Lowell Public School, which spends $12,957 per pupil, of which $335 was administration. It is pretty clear from these numbers that Greater Lowell Tech enjoys a substantial 36% advantage in per pupil spending, in more than double the amount per pupil spent on administration. Never speak.
You're doing fine.
Take a breath. This system is apparently broken when the funding formula forces this to happen. I am concerned that all of the hard work that has been done in the schools will now slip due to the staffing shortages. I would also like to take a moment to praise the school committee for actively seeking public involvement and transparency during this difficult budget process, and also for how quickly you responded to my request for the public budget hearing dates to be added to the website. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak, and thank all of you for your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Chair recognizes Mr. Leary. Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leary.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy and I waited a long time to put this motion out, and I, for a variety of reasons. The biggest reason is because the kids that go to the school are our kids. You know, they're Lowell kids, Drakehead kids, they're our community kids, and, and the school does a very good job educating their students, no question. I don't, for a second, question that. When Drakehead Selectman Jimmy O'Laughlin raised this as an issue at the Drakehead budget last year, that's first one we were taking a look at to see if we should partake in that point. And similar to what Drakehead was questioning, and I think at that time, we said, I didn't, and I think Mr. Leary would agree, we didn't want to point fingers at people because these are kids we're talking about at the end of the day. After going through $8 million in budget cuts out of the regular budget, plus millions of dollars in cuts in Title I through III, we had second guesses at that. Going through this again, at this point, with similar type numbers at this budget, I think it would be irresponsible if we didn't at least ask the question, why is the funding formula that way? And what we tried to do with our framing of our motion was not to attack anybody because we, again, thank the Greater Lowell folks, they educate their students very well, and we want to commend them for that. However, being the fact that we're potentially dismantling our school system while the school down the street is not dismantling it, and in fact, seeking increases, again, it would be irresponsible not to ask these questions, and bringing in the Lowell City Council as well as the state delegation to help with those answers. If it leads to changing the law, then, then so be it. I'm cognizant of the fact that the, the Greater Lowell School, you know, they support a building on their own, so there is going to be increases to their budget over what we normally spend. I get it. However, when everybody's cutting millions of dollars, including the city side last year, I think the city side took a dramatic, you know, tens of million, I mean, it was $17 million cut, and there was no cut other than some busing donations back from the Greater Lowell Tech Vocational School. That's an issue that needs to be addressed. It's not the fault, find fault with anybody at that building. Not their fault, it's the law. And I think an explanation, addressing that, and an explanation with action steps to remedy that, is really what we all should be looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. The only thing more that I, I can add is that, you know, it is, it's our responsibility to ask these questions after last year's budget cuts and what people are, are asking us to do this year. It's our responsibility to, to ask these questions and to get some answers, fully cognizant that all the children of Lowell are, are at both schools, but it's our responsibility to, to fight for every penny we can for the Lowell Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leary. Anyone else on the motion? If my colleagues would permit me just to, I'd like to publicly disclose that I have an immediate family member that works at the Greater Lowell Vocational School, so I do plan to support the motion, but I just wanted to disclose that. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Vote, vote, thank you. Next motion by Ms. Dougherty, request a superintendent to prepare a report that provides details on each club of Lowell High School, including the number of students participating, the number, duration, and purpose of meetings, the club's budget and expenses, and each club's involvement, if any, in activities outside the high school, such as competitions with other schools. Second, by Ms. Martin. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it pretty much speaks for itself. Just in, in, by way of context, I think it was not last budget year, but the year before that, during our budget deliberations, I had a motion asking that we provide a $2,000 stipend to support the growth of a communications club at the high school. And at that time, the discussion was, really should come under negotiations with our union, that these decisions about stipends and all that are in that, happened in that arena. So, when we had our high school finance subcommittee meeting, and the high school suggested eliminating 21, I believe the number was 21, of 35 clubs, I'm, I'm not sure if that's the number, and we looked down the list of the very different kinds of stipend amounts that are attributed to certain clubs, and we asked questions, as, you know, how many students are involved in the science club, for instance, how often does it meet? And we really did not have details about the different organizations and the clubs, and that really prompted me to think, we need to look at this issue, not just in terms of the budget crisis we're currently facing, but how do we really go forward with a fair and equitable system of clubs at the high school? And when I, I asked about it, the response has been, well, you know, we really don't have a, a, a process for determining what a stipend is. It's kind of just developed through the years as a different club came up, and so it really deserves a full look at, and I would hope to, that this report would start that conversation, but ultimately, I recognize we will be negotiating this with our, our union, and I look forward to having those discussions, but this is the first step in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. This is a great motion. I mean, last week, we did, we all sat there at that finance meeting. We got the news that, you know, the recommendation was to cut 21 out of 30 clubs, which was, you know, it was just awful to do that, to even think about it. A few parents have said to me that, you know, I don't, I can't believe what we're recommending to do to our sports programs, but the clubs, I mean, that's unbelievable. You know, just some quick math, and this isn't a very popular answer, if you cut half the stipends in half, you're seven thousand dollars short, and you save all the clubs except maybe one or two, which could be combined. But the point is, we need to start talking about it now. It's my understanding that we have asked the unions to talk about this, we have sent the letter out to, to negotiate this, and it, we need to negotiate it now, because, you know, the stipends, they're, they are, they're all over the place. I'm sure they were justified over the years, but we're in a situation now, and it's not about us, it's not about the stipend, it's about the kids. So, let's sit down, let's get some ideas, and think about it. Can some of the clubs be combined? Can some of the salaries meet, can some of the clubs meet every other week? You know? This is what we need to be doing, and we don't need, well, we can't do that, you know, it's up to you, it's up to him, it's up to her. It's up to us, and I'm glad that this motion is, is on here, because we need to do this now and get it done before next month, when we announce what we're going to do with the clubs. So, thank you for putting the motion on.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, it's a vote. Thank you. Under Subcommittee Reports, the first one, Finance Subcommittee Approve of the Minutes of May 5, 2010. The chair recognizes Mr. Leary.
Just have a motion to approve the minutes for this one, Mayor.
Yes. I'm sorry?
Just, just have a motion to approve the minutes. We already, already had an explanation of that.
Motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor approving the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye. Vote, to vote. Thank you. Under Personnel Subcommittee Report and Approve of the Minutes for the Meeting of May 6, 2010. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Subcommittee did meet. In attendance were members of the Subcommittee, myself, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Laraba. Also, other members of the school committee were the mayor, Ms. Dougherty, Mr. Leahy, and Mr. Leary, and from the school department, Dr. Scott was in attendance. It was a fairly brief meeting. We were there basically just to kick off the superintendent's evaluation process. There was, we discussed kind of where we had left things at the end of last year, more importantly, where we are going forward, so my colleagues are aware. The evaluation instrument has been emailed to you all, so I'm assuming that everyone has received that. If not, please let us know. We're anticipating that it would be returned to the superintendent's office to June Cormier directly by Wednesday, June 9. That will give her time to compile all the information, and the, the overall evaluation information will be emailed back to all of us, so that we'll have it by the 11th in time for us to be able to review everyone's responses and, and be able to have all the information, so that when we present on June 16, we'll all be aware of how the evaluation process has gone overall. If there are any questions, certainly open to them, but I think we've hopefully nailed down the, the process.
Great.
And I submit that as a report of progress.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba.
I just wanted to also point out that during that discussion, Superintendent Scott indicated that she was waiving Section 5(c) of her contract that eliminates her bonus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Motion would be in order to accept the report as a report of progress and approve the minutes of the meeting held May 6, by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Vote, to vote. Thank you. Last Subcommittee Report, Finance Subcommittee Report and Approve of the Minutes of the Meeting of May 10, 2010. Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. The entire school committee, including the mayor, were in attendance, as well as the entire senior administration from both the high school and from central office. The meeting began at, and, and about approximately 150, 155 in attendance, teachers, parents, other administrators from the high school, and, and concerned parties. We had a meeting in the Lowell High School cafeteria. The meeting began at 7 o'clock and lasted well past 10 o'clock. It was a very thoughtful meeting in terms of the superintendent's proposed $2.6 million rounded number cuts for the high school in the upcoming budget. Every individual had an opportunity to speak. We began discussing the proposed cuts relative to the teacher positions, where the proposed cuts ranged from 20 to 24 teachers, that the headmaster was still working on the numbers in terms of where these actual teacher cuts would, would be, would come from. A lengthy discussion regarding how that would be implemented. I think every committee member had an opportunity to ask the headmaster, as well as the senior administration, questions they had to hopefully make some thoughtful dialogue and decisions in the upcoming budget. We then proceeded right into the, the reorganization of the high school, as well as the proposed removal or elimination of one of the four houses at the high school. And I think, again, another thoughtful discussion and answers from both the headmaster, as well as, I think, each committee member went through that analysis in terms of what the proposals were. And I think that was some of the lengthiest discussion, because the proposals on the table ranged from actually four proposals. Proposal A, adding two positions, the master positions, and the, the student services position, coordinator of student services position. Option B, adding the coordinator of student services position. Option C, not adding a position, and then Option C plus one, reorganizing the discipline the discipline and operations position. The Option A and B involved removing one of the four houses. The savings the superintendent articulated for removing a house was $360,000. Not just a house master position, but guidance counselors, clerk schedules, and other personnel within the house. The Option Cs, C and C1, after mentioned, did not have removal of the house. One of them left the status as it is today, with some dialogue in terms of the hierarchy how it would present itself to the headmaster, and C1 actually had the house masters reporting to an upgraded position of discipline and operations. I think when we go through the budget process, I think that'll be a major focus in terms of what actual scenario is accepted, and what dollar value goes with each scenario. So it'll be, it was a lengthy discussion. Not everybody's in complete agreement, but a decision will be made shortly, and I will hear again from everyone regarding that. The meeting went involved in that point into the clubs and the sports cuts. The proposed cuts for the sports is approximately, I think, I believe it was $250,000 rounded. We just discussed the clubs to some extent, where there was a $71,000 cut. As Mr. Leahy and Committee Member Doherty articulated, they were pretty much the same type of discussions in terms of why are we cutting certain parts of each program, what was the rationale. We've asked the, we asked the athletic director for an analysis which he's willing to provide regarding, you know, why these decisions were made, what sport costs what, what actually does each sport bring into the program in terms of revenue generated for, you know, sales, in terms of concessions, or, I think on top of my head, I forgot the, it was basically how many people attend and what do those cost? So really, a complete in-depth analysis. As Mr. Leahy pointed out, a lot of the costs derive around stipends, not only for the clubs, but for the coaches, and this is an area that we're going to be sitting down with our unions and having a good discussion in terms of how we can work with that. Outside parties, as the headmaster pointed out, meaning, you know, some of our local banks, insurance agencies, friends of Lowell High, et cetera, our perspective expressed an interest in coming up with some monies to hopefully bridge the gap to reduce both the $71,000 for the club potential cut, and the quarter of a million dollar cut for the sports program. Again, the entire meeting, from teacher cuts to the maintenance cuts and other programs, were recommendations from the superintendent. It was an opportunity for each member to provide feedback in terms, not only provide feedback, but ask questions so they could make a good decision on their own part, as to where they may vote when we go sit down on May 27 to begin the process. I think also people had a chance to let the administration know where they were unhappy with some of the recommendations. So tonight, when we have the presentation, we'll have some of those, some of those changes will have occurred. And obviously, the committee will be taking that up on the 27th, in terms of where they feel we're going to be making those cuts or not making those cuts. Again, it was a lengthy meeting, but I think it was a good meeting. I believe every, all my colleagues had opportunities to express themselves, as well as get in information, or at least lead the process up to getting information, to make an intelligent decision in the next week. I believe not one committee member there, whether they agreed with each other or not, was happy with the fact that we were looking at making this drastic move with the high school. I think that was representative by each colleague, as well as the administration, both the high school and the central administration. Again, facing the cuts, we have to prepare for what may occur. Obviously, the committee articulated that they're willing to fight for not only the high school, but K through 8, and I think that position will be outlined as we go forward in the next few weeks, but failure to prepare and to outline what may occur would be foolish. And again, not every colleague agree with each other, but we all were pretty unhappy that we are actually looking at this at this point. And I guess I make that as a form of a progress, a report of progress at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Ms. Larba.
Just as a point of clarification, I was not under the impression that either Option A necessarily meant a removal of a house. I thought the consolidation of the house was really a separate conversation, but Plan A and Plan B are not contingent of reducing a house. They were just the structure of the school themselves, and Mr. Leary had said differently, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and just to answer that, I think that, you're correct. I guess I misspoke, but I guess the point would be, is you're adding money to create those positions, there's going to be a cut someplace, so the next lead would be to something, either if it's not that, it would have to be something else.
Correct.
But you did make a correct point. I guess I made an assumption based on dialogue that night and dialogue from past nights, but it's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, I think Mr. Leary did an excellent job in his report. I do want to say that it was certainly a disturbing night for everyone that was there, and I think that it certainly, it certainly hit me quite hard, and the fact that I spent most of my life at the high school, and, and yes, it is, the high school was very dear to me. When I take a look out there, and that, with those number of individuals there, I saw guidance counselors, they're in my house, I saw teachers, cafeteria workers, administrators, and it was a very, clerks and secretaries. It was very disheartening. And I think that over the next few weeks, we certainly have, I think each member is certainly getting telephone calls, and we're seeking advice. So that particular night isn't necessarily the end-all. We certainly are seeking advice from a number of different places. And, you know, when I take a look at the high school, and over the years, I certainly have seen some many, many positive changes have taken place. You know, we've had the institution of the Latin Lyceum, and the freshman academy has transformed into a very successful place. We also have a number of different electives that we didn't have years ago, and now we have them. We've given an opportunity to make Lowell High School, which it is, a very different place than most urban settings. And matter of fact, as we all know, that it was highlighted in Boston Magazine as being one of the best urban high schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We've made great strides in our test scores at the high school, and it's very disheartening to see that we have a possibility of 2.6, almost $2.7 million that have been proposed to be cut from the high school. That's devastating. That will certainly, I think, cut the heart out of the high school, and certainly put it in great, in harm's way. I think that we need to, as I've said often, and I think other members here have talked about putting ideas on the table. You know, it's one thing about sitting here and saying, well, we can't cut this, or we can't cut that, but we need solutions too. The other day, I went up to the Malloy School with a colleague, and I took a tour through that Malloy School, which I'm familiar with. As a house master for a number of years, I recommended a number of students to attend the Malloy School. These are students that obviously need some special attention, and as a house master, I certainly recommended the Malloy School. I thought it was an excellent idea. That's when we had extra money. We don't have extra money today. And when I went up there and I took a look at it, and I said to myself, what can we do if we take this Malloy School, and, and I'm not saying it's the best solution, but it's, it's something that we should be putting on the table to take a look at. If we close that Malloy School down, it would be the savings of somewhere around $800,000. Now, I'm saying to myself, what do we do with that $800,000 down the high school? We perhaps would not eliminate a house office. I think that that particular area, we've talked about the other night, and there were great ideas that were put on the table. I think that would be a mistake, and I think that we need to save that, if we possibly can. But once again, just to say we needed to save it is not enough. We need to come up with ideas, to come up with the money, to have that reinstituted. And also, when I took a look at, my colleagues mentioned tonight, about the sports program and the different, the different clubs and activities. We've had the fine arts program, which has been fantastic down the high school. All these programs are in jeopardy. And I would like to put that on the table, to bring the Malloy School down to the high school as a suggestion, and I would like to ask the, I'd like to make a motion, to ask the superintendent to prepare a report on the option of closing down the Malloy Alternative Program and absorbing the students from that program into the spread classrooms at Lowell High School. The report should include all potential cost savings in salaries, benefits, and operational expenses, along with a plan on how these students could be served within the high school, using existing staff resources that are already in place. And once again, I know that I will have colleagues, and I know that the superintendent will disagree with me, but again, I think it's something that we should list, take a look at, and to see if it has any validity, and if it does make any sense. And I'd like to have, and I know that my colleagues have often said, we need as much information as possible in order to make good decisions. That's all I'm asking here for this, for this motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In order for us to entertain that, we need a suspension of the rules to get the motion on the floor.
Motion for suspension of the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Leary. Second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor of the suspension, please indicate by saying aye. It's a vote. We have a motion on the floor. We need a second to continue the discussion. Second by Mr. Leahy. Mr. Leary.
And I occur with my colleague regarding looking at everything. I don't have a problem with looking at a report, looking at that program. I'm not going to try to stop information. But it has, it is being looked at. I think I've asked the same questions offline to the headmaster, to Mr. Lang, to Assistant Superintendent Murphy, to the superintendent. I'm going to call you next, Mr. Franco, because I haven't called you on it yet. The point is, I think it is being looked at, but you know what? It is, it's information. I think every colleague needs to have every bit of information they need to make these decisions. I think one of the reasons why I didn't follow up with the motion this year is because you're going to have to roll all those students back into the building, and the reason why they're at the Malloy is because you didn't want them in the building to begin with, because the services were not being met for them, as with other students. But, you know what? It is an unusual time. We're looking at cutting a significant dollar value. It's something we need to look at. So I'm not going to stop the information, but I did want to point out that this is something that other committee members have definitely looked at, and it's something, including, you know, busing issues, you know, professional development. There's a lot of other things that, again, I think the superintendent articulated quite clearly this year, last year, and this year, what isn't being, what isn't necessarily being cut or proposed to be in cut is definitely being discussed, because this is, these are challenging times. And I think the headmaster clearly put up his proposal saying, I'd like to cut the Malloy Schools a proposal. There's a lot of different A, Bs, and Cs that need to be attached. One, where do they go? Do you actually achieve an $800,000 savings, or is it more like a couple hundred thousand dollars savings? Because you're not necessarily going to be eliminating everybody there. Someone's going to have to run that operation. So, good point about the information, 110% back it up. If it's not a move this year, it very well could be a move next year. So I just want to point out that a lot of other people have been looking at this. It hasn't been something that just has been isolated out there on its own. Just based on some of the information that we've been getting, not anecdotally, but directly offline, it really doesn't seem to be as good a cut as first anticipated. But my colleague, again, you got to have that information in front of you before you make decisions. You got to have that comfort level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy, then Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. I also just want to say that, you know, it's great to have this information, and it's good to look at it, so it's a good motion. But what I would like to see too, is let's go to the other side, and let's, and I'm going to call you, Mayor, on this. Maybe what we should be doing is regionalizing, and maybe we should charge to have kids come there and fill that school up, and have 20, 15, 20 kids in a classroom. So I don't know if we want to add that to the motion or not, or just keep it separate, but I would rather, you know, see us utilizing that building. And if we could charge other districts locally and have more kids in there, you know, how much money would that bring in to the system? And I don't know if you get the full tuition from the town or city that the students come from, but that could be a significant amount of money, so I'd throw that out too.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to address the concerns that I have with regards to the particular motion that Committee Member Conway has brought forward at this time. I do respectfully ask the committee to consider, there are many proposals that we're still looking at, that we're going to have to address, as Mr. Leary mentioned, for next year. We are still not out of the woods. This is a very difficult financial time. Next year, we're either going to be missing four or six million dollars of stimulus money out of our budget. The cuts that were put forward in front of you last year, and the cuts that have been put forward, and we're asking you to consider this year, and the cuts that we're bringing forward next year, follow in this administration's mind in a very logical order. So for example, last year, we closed our largest middle school, and made sure that all of our middle school classrooms had class sizes that were just above actually industry standard, or what we would like to see, but we knew we had to do that, because we had some of our classrooms and some of our schools with very, very low class sizes, in beautiful, brand-new buildings. That was one issue that we addressed, so that we would realize that savings in this year's budget and next year's budget. Moving on to the Bon Marche Building and the other lease downtown, we have in this year's budget seen a cost savings of almost $500,000. That is a lot of teachers for us. We took that cut in the first year. We knew that was a very unpopular cut, but just like closing the Rogers School was a cut nobody wanted to make, but those decisions were made upfront. The, I would like, at a minimum, if the committee would consider me addressing the budget and giving my overview on where I think we need to go, because there are, there are other suggestions of other cuts that can be made, and yes, the Malloy School has been a topic of discussion, along with other suggestions that, again, I don't want to mention here tonight, because these are real people's lives, staff, or organization. We don't want to upset people that, okay, they're thinking about this and this at this time, if it's not going to be dealt with for another year. Bringing the Malloy School back to the high school, it has been discussed for quite a long time, the two options that have been looked at. One is to bring the Malloy School back to the high school in an isolated wing, and we looked at the cost savings, and again, this would have to be cost out to be, you know, more exact numbers for the committee. But if we brought back the staff and the students, the cost savings, just over $300,000, based on Mr. Smeris' numbers that I've seen, again, Mr. Lang has not run these numbers, that was one option, and to bring back the entire population of the Malloy, and to put these students back into our regular population. I, as your superintendent, have concerns over that particular model. We have a very effective alternative school at the Malloy School. A lot of work has been done to address the academic needs, the course offerings. The committee has invested a lot of resources in the program, and we have seen gains and improvement. A large part of why the alternative program works is a small learning community for our students. Kids are kept safe, and quite often, a smaller learning community for some of our students is a better offering. Two, a concern that I did express to the headmaster and to Mr. Conway around this particular idea, to bring students back who have, some of them have very difficult behavioral issues, and issues of conduct disorder, and I really didn't think it was, at this time, the best fit for the high school, given that we have a new headmaster, given the fact that a lot of these children, we know, are not necessarily comfortable with a larger setting at this time, and that would result in a lot of suspension, expulsions, et cetera. Really, again, for the first, easily, you could say, first three to four months of the new headmaster's position, tied up in dealing with children who are really, to be quite frank, challenging for us, and that's why they're at an alternative placement, so that they can get adjusted and come back eventually to the high school and be more successful. So the plan operationally for me, before I could come in front of the committee, and I don't know if five business days till this, the next hearing, is going to be enough for me to be able to present operationally a plan that I'm comfortable with, with regards to the safety issues. I'm not saying it can't be done, and to Mr. Leary's point, I'm not saying it doesn't have to be looked at, but it needs to be done in a very thoughtful, systemic way, and we have presented to this committee over, in the last six months, very thoughtfully, in every area, over $6 million, and I'll speak to this further along in the agenda, but anything four is extremely damaging for Lowell Public Schools, $4 million. Say anything over $4 million is just, we are concerned that it will do permanent damage, that I cannot even see any, you know, it fixed in the next year or the year after. So the cuts that we take this year are going to be that deep. So I would, you know, ask the committee to just at least hear the rationale and the overview of the budget, and some of the recommendations that we're putting forward to consider next Thursday night. And I do also caution the committee that it is the 11th hour, and a lot of work has been done on the budget. Proposals have been brought forward in a very thoughtful way, and I'm sure each one of you at this point have, what about this, what about this? And it is just a lot to manage to bring quality reports forward, so that I can guarantee high-quality education and safety around this particular motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly can appreciate the superintendent's concerns in this matter, but with all due respect, I'm worried about this year. in this matter. But with all due respect, I'm worried about this year. That's what I'm worried about. Next year, I'll worry about next year. And I understand that we have to plan. And that's a great argument, and I'm sure people can kick me around by saying, you know, "We have to have long-range planning." I understand that. But the fact is, we have to get through this year. And when we talk about the recommendations, and I understand what you're saying, that you have put recommendations forward, and that- and I also believe that you people sat down and thought about them very carefully and thought that these would be the best recommendations. I personally don't think eliminating a house is a great recommendation because of the fact we have a new headmaster coming in. And when we- we obviously want this individual to be successful, and now we're talking about taking another 150 and 175 students and putting them into the house. And I know Madam Superintendent refers back to, I believe, 2002 or 2003. Well, problems have been more complex and compound over those last six or seven years. And I think if you talk to the educators, they will tell you that the difficulties have increased enormously in the last few years. So once again, I think that I'm concerned about getting through this year. And we talk about the Malloy School. I agree with you 100 percent. These are students that certainly need some special attention. Madam Superintendent, I was there with those students, and they were in each house, each one of those houses. And at that particular point, once again, we had monies, extra monies. We developed the Malloy School. When I went up there Friday, there were 55 students there, and we're spending over $800,000. That's a lot of money. And that's why I say this is something that we have to take a look at. Is it necessarily the best solution? Perhaps not. I'm not sure. But the fact is, we have to take a good look at it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba?
I certainly understand my colleagues' reasoning behind doing this. My concern is, we have a budget that's being presented to us. We've got forums coming up for it. I don't really want to have a rushed conversation about something like that. I think the conversation is important, but I think we're at a juncture right now that that's not something we can ask them to churn out. So my personal thought is that I would not be supporting this motion at that time, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple kind of smaller questions within that. The prospect of being able to bring these students back and put them into the traditional special education track of programming at Lowell High School, my understanding is that these are not necessarily special education students.
Correct.
Okay, so they're behavioral students. They don't have IEPs?
Oh, some do, some don't.
I mean, there are some, okay. But as a rule, we wouldn't be able to take all 55 or whatever the number would be, and just kind of put them into special programming. Some of them would be going into just your regular classrooms without any real additional supports, because there wouldn't be any IEP driving that or anything like that. Okay. My concern is that we- I do feel the need to get information. And I think we do need to be careful in what we're asking for. But I do think that, you know, we've asked for a lot of information, and the reality is, we're going to keep asking, unfortunately. What I'd recommend is that perhaps if we can take a few things off the table, perhaps we can free up some time. One of the concepts I know that we've been talking about, and I've spoken with the superintendent about, has been the whole Plan A, B, C, CBA, Elementary P, different programs, different plans that we're looking at for the high school. Would it be possible for us to perhaps streamline that this evening, make some decisions so that moving forward, you're not costing out three and a half different proposals? And maybe that would be able to free us up some time for you to be able to do, you know, the preliminary look at the- at this recommendation, and for us to be able to recognize our need for information and you and your staff's need to survive this, in terms of having the time, the time on task. I'd offer that as a compromise.
Ms. Laraba, and Ms. Doherty?
Thank you for making that suggestion, Ms. Martin. I think that's something important. In order to give the superintendent some direction, I would ask, the indulgence of my committee members, to at least ask her to start with Plan A or B, and then if we need to work our way down, work our way down. But I think part of this budget process really should be what we actually need in the system. What is the best plan? And the super- in my mind, the superintendent and her staff came up with Plan A for a reason, and had to have put a lot of time and energy into it. Having had some, you know, interaction with the high school, the complaints really are about communication, lines of authority and follow-up. And I think, and again, we can all disagree on this, that there's merit in A and B in addressing those issues. Because trying to short-change it now is not going to address those issues. And as we go into deeper budget cuts, and you have additional things on top of that, it's just going to make it a little bit harder. You've got people at the high school that are already doing multiple jobs. If we don't give them the support in terms of leadership and give our new headmaster support in terms of people helping him out, we're going to be in a more difficult situation next year. So, I understand, and the point has been made throughout these conversations, that that money would have to come somewhere. I would ask that we let the superintendent go forward, and it's her job to decide how to best present that and how to make that money fit. And that still gives us the option, as we're going through the budget, to say, "You know what? This just isn't working," and cost it down. But I truly, truly believe that we need to give the high school some structure and allow the support for the new headmaster, for our staff, and for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doherty?
Actually, my comments are back towards the original motion regarding the Malloy School. And I respect my colleague's perspective on the high school. I know he has spent a better part of his life there. And the staff connections, the personal relationships that he has with the people there are important and part of what he brings to this job, his understanding of the work they do there. My perspective is that of a parent. I have a child at the high school. I have another one coming up. And I think that has a different view on things there. In terms of the information, I think we absolutely need the information. We do. We need to look at it. I hear very clearly the superintendent's concerns with folding those students back into the high school. I share those concerns. And I guess my perspective on this would be, you know, we don't need all the answers upfront with the report that looks at what would it be like if we closed the Malloy School, just some general ideas. Could we save $800,000? Is that even feasible? Just kind of a boilerplate look at it. And then, if there is the will of the committee, if there is a majority of people who support that, then there would have to be more work. But I recognize that we are under a timeframe now. We're getting a budget tonight, and I really, I think that the reason we have the superintendent and we have her cabinet is they're the experts who are going to advise us. I don't pretend to be an expert on this issue. I think my responsibility is to protect the education of our children to the best of my ability. And I look towards the superintendent for guidance in that. So I hear very clearly your concerns, and I share your concerns. And I think there might be a way to provide us with this, just kind of a general, basic information. How many students? I mean, I thought there were more than 55 students at the Malloy. You know, just basic information that would give us a starting point to see, is the majority, is there a will, a majority will, to go forward with that road? And if there isn't, then we've cut it right then and there. But we need to have something to look at. That would be my take on how we can move forward with my colleague's motion. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, then Mr. Conway.
Thank you. Just to be clear with the committee, it's absolutely no problem to get you the information that Mr. Conway has asked for, and will do so willingly. To Mr. Leary's point, we have the information. We've been working on it. The issue, and this is the main obstacle for me at this point, operationally, I just don't exactly, I'm not comfortable with what it's going to look like in our hallways, in our classrooms, at the high school, bringing back children who have been- we don't remove children from our main high school to an alternative high school unless- there are significant issues that that child has faced. So it's not, with all due respect, it's not a willy-nilly, okay... They're leaving us for very big issues that we, the committee and the school department, has invested many therapeutic resources. We have guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, teachers. We've increased programming this year. We've improved the programming there. I am- I can bring forward that there will be a cost savings, to Mr. Conway's point, to bring back the Malloy School, even to isolate it on one wing. That is a cost savings that we will realize. But again, I am responsible for educational excellence and the time that we are looking at cutting programs. And to cut an alternative high school in an urban center, the only one we have is deep. That's a big- that's a very difficult cut. That was a good program that was put in place. We didn't always have it. And I just put that out there. Of course, the information we have, we'll bring forward. Absolutely. I appreciate Ms. Martin's suggestion. If we could have another vote, just so we know how much we're, you know, what we're costing out, if anything, for the restructuring plan, that would be great. But again, we will bring all information forward.
Mr. Conway, then Ms. Doherty?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think we're kind of going around in a circle here. The bottom line is, I'm just looking for some information. If the majority of the school committee does not want to, does not want to go along with that, that's fine. I'm just putting the proposal on the table. Simple as that. The other point of clarification is that there are more than 55 students there. There were 55 students present when I went up there.
Over 100.
There's about 105 students in total.
Correct.
Approximately half of them were absent that particular day. And I think you will also find, and I think Madam Superintendent is correct, that we do have students up there with some real problems. There's no doubt about it. But many of the students up there, too, Mr. Mayor, now all we have to do is ask the housemasters, are habitual truants. And that's another reason why they're put up there. Not specific, not totally, in total, for discipline reasons. It is also for truancy, too. I know I've put students up there for truancy. So, again, it's not 110 necessarily discipline-type problems. That's mixed in with attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would my colleagues, like a roll call on the motion, or?
So, we'd be taking a roll call on the request for information motion, and then we can return and look at the next step in terms of-
While we're on the suspension.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, and roll call.
Ms. Laraba?
Just to confirm, we're doing Mr. Conway's motion?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, motion passes.
Thank you. While we're still on the suspension, the chair recognizes Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. What I- if perhaps the superintendent could give us the, I guess, three and a half options, I can say first off. So the first option was, why don't you do what I would-
Thank you, Ms. Martin. The first option was Plan A, which was the reinstatement of the assistant principal, or as we call it, master position, as well as the director of student support services. That's Plan A with the interns. And then we had Plan B, which basically made everybody below the headmaster, three director positions. And the third option was to keep the plan that we had. We have this year, the present structure. And then at the last meeting, Mr. Leary corrected me and said that, in fact, I was supposed to interpret that as, I believe, to elevate the presently, the discipline operations person. So that that particular position would be at the director level, so that we would have a direct report from the hostmas, the hostmasters would directly report to that person. Presently, in the org chart, that position, the specialist position, is below those positions.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy, then Ms. Doherty and Mr. Conway.
Okay. Just for a point of clarification, could you, on the last option where we were elevating someone's position, what's the cost of that?
The cost is, and the range is this wide, and perhaps Mr. Lang would like to speak to it further, is because it depends on the qualifications of the individual. So, in your Unit B, under Director, there's a full range, depending on years of service, educational level. So, it could be upward to $20,000 more than the present position. It could be much lower than that, but there is a range.
Ms. Doherty? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Leahy?
Well, I know. I'm sorry. Can I just add? Well, I just wanted to say one thing, though, too. If we're, I mean, we've got to be honest. We're talking about putting that position up. Would that be an automatic? The person in that position, are they automatically going up, or are they applying for the job?
Thank you for the question.
Because if it's an automatic person moving up-
Right.
She's obviously at the top of the range, so.
Wait, actually, it doesn't, it can't work like that. Your Unit B contract says that it has to be posted. If we didn't, they would grieve it, and rightly so.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
And the new headmaster would hire-
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
I'm sorry. I'm still confused between C and C1. C is the current structure. C1 is to elevate that position to a director so that they would have authority over the housemasters.
Correct.
You're saying we would have to post for that?
Yes.
And that the salary, we don't know yet how much more it would be, but it's probably going to be more than $4,000.
Yeah, it's the range. And I just want the committee to know that it could be upward to, with that block, up to $20,000.
Up to $20,000. Okay.
And that's consistent with most of our positions. There's, you know, considerable range, depending on years of experience and educational level.
Thank you. Mr. Conway, then Ms. Laraba?
I think you answered the question, because I wasn't sure as far as what would happen, whether a person would just automatically move up, because the title of the job is discipline in-
Operations.
Buildings or something?
Discipline, operations.
Operations.
Discipline in operations. And we're talking about a completely different, completely different job. Again, I think that there is that confusion with that C, Option C. I think people seem to have-
Well, C is what we have right now.
Have great levity with Option C. But the fact is, I think it's just a matter of whether one just stays, whether on Option C stays the way it is right now, and as I said, clarify the chain of command, number one. Or the other way is to elevate it, period.
Right. That's C1.
That's pretty, that's pretty simple.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. I realize I'm becoming a little redundant, but I would implore and beg my colleagues not to make this decision based on finances only. The structure at the high school needs to be tightened, and it's not as simple of just reiterating what the current structure is. The current structure, in my opinion, is not working as well as it could and not will as it has in the past. Again, I would ask that we shoot for the moon and say what we really would like. And if we need to cut back on that down the road, then you can. But it's very hard to start something down here and then try to build up. I would much rather that we start off with what's best for the high school, and again, going with the superintendent's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
I'm sorry. My mic was already on. I'd just like to comment. I was one of the people at that meeting in the beginning, talking about looking at reorganizing the high school because of the accountability factor. What's changed is we now have a new headmaster coming in. At that time, we had just reopened the search, and we were, you know, worried that we weren't going to get many candidates to come forward. So, my decision now, my change of heart, is not totally based on finances, although, as my colleague said, that meeting the other night, when we looked at the level of cuts, not just at the high school, which was, you know, horrific to think about, but through the whole system, K to eight as well. That is, it's one piece of what's got me thinking differently today. The other part of it is, I'd like to give the new headmaster a chance to put in those accountability measures himself and come back to us and say, "This is what I'd like to see." I think that that makes sense, now that we've got somebody in place. And I'm very excited about the candidate and hopeful that he's going to do some wonderful work here in Lowell. And I guess, so it's kind of a twofold thing. There's a fiscal piece of it, yes. I'm not really into throwing $130,000 at administration when we're looking at really deep cuts in all other areas. And the other piece of it is, now we've got somebody in place, let's give him a chance to work within the structure that's there and identify the changes that he'd like to see down the road.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Your Honor. The restructuring plan of the high school really addresses two big themes, recurring themes. After, you know, listening- themes after, you know, listening to the concerns people have about the high school. One, the capacity of the present structure is lacking. People have a lot on their plates, and we have taken retirements and not replaced people, and we've made cuts and not replaced them. And the issue at this point, again, goes to workload. And when things aren't streamlined and there's too much on people's plates, important things get missed. That was one issue, capacity. Capacity of the team over there is, in my mind, very limited, just because of the volume of work, because it is such an large high school. And the second issue that the restructuring plan addresses is accountability. Accountability, so that people are held accountable for procedures, for what is in their job descriptions, and that people are evaluated appropriately. And I do, again, at this time, I guess, since Mr. Conway has brought up the issue of the Malloy School on the floor, I do want the committee to know that, knowing full well and appreciative, that this is a very tough decision for the committee to make, given how tight the finances are. If the vote were to go to keep the present structure, and again, I totally appreciate and respect the difficult decisions you have to make, given the capacity issue presently that I see at the high school, to bring over an alternative school with over 100 children who are very demanding with regards to their needs and how much time that would take from the new headmaster, given what we know right now, this year is the situation at the high school, by Bill Samaras', Mr. Samaras' own, like, he spoke in front of you 10 weeks ago and told you that he thought this was a good plan and that this addressed these two big issues. Now, again, I totally appreciate the financial quandary that we are all in, but it is my concern that I will bring it up now that it's on the floor. Another reason, you know, to bring that cut forward operationally in the context of our present structure would again heighten my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin and Ms. Leary.
Thank you very much. And I think part of, you know, our conversation the other evening too really did focus on all of our recognition of the changing landscape. That as bad as we thought things were 10 weeks ago, when we initially had this conversation, that we would be foolish not to recognize that things are worse now. I think that that was certainly articulated pretty clearly by the headmaster, Mr. Samaras, in his recommendations to us, focusing really on Option C and C1, C2, basically the one where we leave everything the same, or we do make an investment in bringing a position online that would have some additional responsibilities in terms of a more and better structured reporting, you know, organizational chart. And I think that, you know, again, certainly my priorities have changed over these last few weeks. And I think that in an environment where we're actively and as loud as we can crying out, asking our unions to make concessions, asking them to give up things that they fought for over the course of many years, to turn around and then say, we're going to be spending money in this way, I think it's unreasonable to say that we're going to go through this budget process shooting for the moon. And I know, I mean, it's a phrase, I'm not taking it any more seriously than you mean it, but, I mean, we're not shooting for the moon. It's unrealistic to think that we can do that. And I think it belies the job we have at hand. And I, for one, would not be comfortable coming up with some kind of hearts and flowers budget that I know can't be real. We've asked our unions to be real with us, to recognize what our situation is. It would, we would not be doing our jobs if we didn't show that same honesty and integrity in our process. My motion, to hopefully maybe wrap up this conversation, and we vote, we don't vote, however it happens, is fine, but as at least an initial recommendation, I would recommend asking the administration to investigate Option C and C.A., the final two, which only include either remaining the same or the increase of the investment in that one position to change the reporting structure. I think if we can even accomplish that in this year, that would be something. Thank you.
Motion on the floor. We have a second. Second by Mr. Leary. Chair recognizes Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, one point, the vote for getting information for the Malloy School through you to the superintendent, I recognize what you've articulated, Madam Superintendent, and I concur with you. I won't be voting to bring the Malloy School over, but I think when a colleague asks for information, we need to get the information to that colleague. I think that's imperative. And I, offline, talking to a variety of you yourself as well, including the headmaster, this is a project that would take several months to organize, and there's different steps. Once you take Step A, bringing them in, there's a whole lot of other steps that have significant consequences. As far as this year, unfortunately, when you're in business or when you're looking at operation, you just can't look at this year. You've got to look at, what's the landscape going to be in the next few years? And it's painful, because you're taking real human beings and not putting them in a position that's positive for them in a lot of cases. But if you're sitting on the board, you're fiscally irresponsible if you don't look at what's going to happen in the next few years. You have to plan accordingly, and every step you take has a consequence. All the steps we have taken are consequences. I want to support Ms. Martin's motion for the two Cs, two Cs, C and C1. You know, it's another Irish articulate, instead of making a D, we'd make it C1, make it more, you know, wonderful. I think the focus here really is not only the reality of the fiscal situation, but also the fact that, as Ms. Doherty outlined, you're bringing in a new individual to look at the organization. And I can't say, I don't know what word to use, but we are going to be looking at that organization, the high school, as well as K-8, all the way through next year, because we're going to be faced with the same challenges. Not only that, but, you know, we're in 2010, approaching 2011, things have changed since, you know, 1980, 1990, 2000. Things are always changing. And unfortunately, organizations have to move to meet the needs of the students and the taxpayer. But I think having that individual taking a look at that operation, making strong recommendations next year, is important. But I do acknowledge that change has to happen now. And I think looking at the current structure as it stands in place today versus improving it, or potentially improving it, I mean, maybe that's not the way we go, but looking at if that is an improvement, is something that I think is a wise move to make at this point in time. I think removing a house at this point with a new headmaster coming in, unless we're talking seven, eight, nine million dollar cuts, I don't think that's our first tier cut, in my opinion. I may have some strong disagreement from other folks on that. I think with a new individual coming in with massive teacher layoffs at the high school, we need to have some type of structure, although that structure definitely is going to be evolving and will need to evolve. And I think having a direct report might be that actual catalyst that begins the process. Unfortunately, process is not ending this year or this vote. So I just wanted to articulate that, make sure my position was clear. Either way you look at it, it's not a happy choice. It's just a choice that you're following reality from the fiscal situation. And the number one goal, and I think Ms. Doherty said it, student achievement. You know, that's what you're here for. And then lots of times for student achievement, you hurt people that you care about, because the bottom line is student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leary. Ms. Laraba.
Thank you. Clearly, I won't support the motion. I think we have heard enough that the structure in place at the high school is not working. We're handing the new headmaster a setup that's not working. I think if we went with one of the other structures, he could have a say in who would be in those positions. And in terms of being fiscally responsible, I'm trying to look ahead. Next year, the situation is not going to be any different, and the headmaster would be in the position of saying to us, I need help, and we're still not going to have money. So you either make the investment now, or say you can't make the investment later. In terms of dealing with the union, I certainly understand how they would be put out with adding onto the structure, but my response to that would be is, these positions are meant to support the teachers and the students, and ultimately, it's more important to support the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to ask for a roll call on the motion.
Ms. Laraba.
No.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Six sheyes, one nay, passes.
Thank you. Anything else while we run the suspension? Moving back to the regular agenda, I would entertain a motion to accept Mr. Leary's report as a report of progress and approve the minutes by Ms. Laraba, second by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Post vote. Thank you. Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a point of personal privilege.
On what grounds, Mr. Conway?
For a brief statement.
Chair recognizes Mr. Conway for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we take a look at the budget, the proposals that have been put forth by the superintendent, the elementary level, we have $2,424,324. The middle school, $1,385,328. And the high school, $2,649,742, for a total of almost six and a half million, which we have said numerous times on this floor, Mr. Mayor, that we have cut over 500 positions in this school department in the last five years. I think this city has a commitment, we have a commitment to the 13,500 students, children that live in the city of Lowell, that go to our schools. They are depending, Mr. Mayor, on us. The cuts that have been put forth, the proposals, is devastating. Everyone sitting here realizes that. Cuts that I think will certainly put our school system in harm's way. We have made great strides in all levels over the years, over the past few years. Our staff has worked very hard to gain those positive advantages for our students. I want to share a couple of things with you, Mr. Mayor. And the source of this is the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. This is information that we supply to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. In 1993, our city's contribution to our school system, our city's contribution to our school system was $22,742,582, or 49% of our school budget. In 2009, Mr. Mayor, our city's contribution to our school budget was $11,190,443, or, Mr. Mayor, 9% of our school budget. We've gone from 49% down to 9% of our contribution. I'm not a mathematician, Mr. Mayor, but I know that, checking with some people, we took a look at these numbers, we're talking about a decrease of 80% to our school department. Thank heavens for the delegation down at the State House that has helped us out, because if we had to depend strictly on the city, our 13,500 students would be in big trouble. And yet, Mr. Mayor, and I know this is not going to be a popular thing, but the city manager and the city council have recommended two new positions in the last few weeks, and also contemplating three other administrative, other jobs. I don't think that's very responsible. Just as I have said to the superintendent, adding two new administrative positions on the school department side, I didn't think was very responsible either. I think that we have an obligation, we have an obligation to educate those students. We need an educated workforce. We need to give these 13,500 students an opportunity, Mr. Mayor, that we had. And I don't want to sell them chart. And I think it's important that the message goes back to the city manager and goes back to the city council, that we need to fund these schools appropriately so that these students can get a good education. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Moving on with the agenda, report of the superintendent. Madam Superintendent, early release time report and presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've had our second early release day today, actually, at the K-8 level, and we are very happy to report to the committee that operationally, all went well, children got home safely. And we had a very, we've gotten already very good feedback from our teachers and our staff throughout the system. The report in front of you outlines the various professional development offerings that were offered. After we sit down with staff and review the results of today, we'll give you a full report on what occurred. This was the agenda. We would like to take a minute, because we think it is important for you to see the literacy video that was actually the brainchild of Deputy Superintendent Franco and Phyllis Schlichter with regards to setting expectations across the system for all of our teachers with regards to literacy and instruction. I didn't know, Ms. Franco, if you wanted to address this committee before we see the video?
Ms. Franco.
Oh, sorry, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if it's the right evening to see a 15-minute video, but it does get us back to teaching and learning, which has been the core behind all of this conversation. And we always go back to that. So today, we did have a review in all of our K-8 schools, including our alternative schools, all listed here, that reviewed the literacy professional development that was done for all teachers, K through 6 and 7 and 8 with keys to literacy. And so the high school actually worked on a whole school meeting of the AFT training that we had done with communication, that the high school had had the least ability to have representation. So that was presented by those of us who went to New York, except for me, because I am always a person who's doing two other things on professional development day, but I know my team did a fabulous job. So we had a consistent K-8 plan, but our message needed to be consistent, because, you know, all of us have a different perspective as we hear whomever we speak. So we decided that we, Dr. Scott and myself, and Dr. Schlichter, would set the context for all of our teachers to hear the same message of really what the work is, and no matter what happens with these budget hearings, we will open school in September, teaching and learning. And so that's what this is talking about in the work we've done most currently. So it will be 15 minutes. I want to thank Jack Bernard. We went, did a first take, and he, as usual, made magic. So thank you, Jack. So all about teaching and learning for 15 minutes, so please enjoy.
Good afternoon. I'm Jean Franco, Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and I have the distinct pleasure of welcoming you today to our release day. We are starting the release day across all of our K-8 schools with this video to just set the context of our work and to bring the work that's been done in the area of language of literacy and literacy to a consistent place in our school system. And I have the pleasure of being here with Superintendent of Schools, Chris Augusta Scott, and Coordinator of English Language Arts of Literacy, Dr. Phyllis Schlichter. So today, our role is to just set a consistent message for you all. So I am going to turn this over to Dr. Scott to begin.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Franco. I appreciate that. And it's very exciting that we're here today to share a common message that will go through the district. A lot of work has been done in literacy in the last two years, and we're building on a very strong foundation. a very strong foundation throughout the system. We adopted the Scott-Forsman approach to reading and writing, and when we went to all the different schools about 24 months ago now, we heard teachers give us very important feedback on what they felt the weaknesses of the program were and what the strengths were. And many of the issues that came up were around the fact that we needed a stronger response to intervention model throughout the system, and that although Scott-Forsman was a very strong tier-one level of instruction, many of our students weren't at that level and needed a response to intervention at a second or third tier, and sometimes even a fourth-tier intervention. To do a response to intervention model in the area of literacy, to come up with appropriate strategies for children who perhaps aren't at grade level, is very challenging work. Well, public schools have the second-largest population of English language learners in the state, and many of our students have also special education learning difficulties. So to do that, we really felt it was important to bring our teachers together, professional learning communities at grade level, to look at their data, to determine what exactly the data told them about their students, and to develop lessons and instructional strategies that would address the needs of the students in their classroom. When we established those professional learning communities, my session, we feel that our chances of getting it right for our students obviously has exponential effect, because teachers are not working in isolation on these very important issues of student achievement, closing the achievement gap. Another issue that we heard from our teachers was that there were many assessment tools being used throughout the system, and in fact, so many that it really did infringe upon the amount of minutes of instructional time. With that said, we have, and Dr. Schlichter, as we call Dr. Phyllis, we'll talk about this later, with regards to setting a standard assessment, Fuentes and Penau, for our language learners, and to determine what exactly students need. So having one consistent evaluation tool, and for people to understand what does that data tell us, what instructional strategy again needs to be employed to take our students to the next level. It is an exciting journey. We built on a very strong foundation of the previous administration, and as we move forward, again, we will only be able to close the achievement gap and to see significant improvement by working together, by coming together as professionals and educators, having very informed conversations. I know Dr. Phyllis is going to talk more about the work that she's done with regards to professional development assessment strategies this year in our district. But we're very excited that this initiative has gone to scale with regards to professional learning communities and the professional development that's been done throughout the system. So I pass it back over to Deputy Franco.
Thank you. I have been honored to speak to you and set the big-picture context for our collective work across the system today. So thanks for the work of Superintendent Scott, the work of our school committee, and your dedicated service to children, that we have this release time to reflect our work and share our practices, successes, questions, and process our next steps in professional learning with your critical input. I'll reiterate the core values of our school system that many of you have heard me talk about before, and I believe this is the mission of public education in every city and town in the nation. The first one is that all students can perform at high standards, given sufficient time and support. The thought behind this statement solidifies the belief systems that all children can learn, maybe not at the same time, on the same day, depending on their educational voyage, but we owe each child a minimum of a year's growth from when they begin each school year with us. As we know, when a child is ready for progress, more than one year's growth, our differentiated practice enables us to guide them to excel. This work we are doing now is giving us common knowledge and tools across the school system to assess, remediate, accelerate a child's learning, no matter how they come to us. I love working alone, because I know that we share the belief as practitioners that all of our students deserve the same opportunities that we expect for our own little children, whether they are sons or daughters, grandchildren, nieces and nephews, friends or neighbors. Equally important is the core belief in our youth is that we believe in our work as professionals. Our second core belief is all teachers can teach to high standards, given the right conditions and support. The power of your daily work of teaching classrooms across the city, combined with your professional planning, collaboration, professional knowledge, is a key to success as a school system, and being able to stay ahead of the accountability data that threatens every city and town, and as we are feeling it locally in our first-level four school. Your belief in students and general connection to each of them matters, and combined with your talent is what makes the difference. This work matters and lasts. I'm excited about our work across the system, and I believe it's a critical time that we are sharing common learning across our grade levels, developing common language and practice in the areas of language development and literacy. I want to thank Dr. Phyllis Schlichter for her amazing work with all of the K-6 teachers, and I sent her along with his team for this support. I hope that this time is meaningful for you, and I await your honesty to help plan the next steps of professional learning, so that this work matters, empowers, and develops our practice as a school system to best meet the needs of our youth. Although we are uncertain about future funding, and there is a myriad political concern in our field, we continue to be the warriors for our children, and it will continue to be our work that leads the educational future of this, our next generation. Thank you for your work today, and I hope that this is a great session. And now I want to turn this over to Dr. Schlichter.
Well, when I was preparing for today's presentation, I was trying to think about what questions might you have of me if I were personally in your school? And so because we're doing a system-wide, we wanted to make it consistent. I wrote down a couple of questions that came to my mind and responded with a couple of answers. So the first thing that you're all asking is, why are we here today? What's the purpose of this early release day? And to me, what we have accomplished in a general sense this year is trying to make our systems consistent, our ways that we do instructional practices, the way we think about assessment, and the way we organize our classrooms. And so as a part of that, we really engaged in a huge professional development endeavor this year. And so today's purpose is to, at a district level, to continue with that, keep the momentum going for all the professional development that you've received in English Language Arts K-28 this year. Back in September, it went from September to through the winter, we had many long wintry days that we spent down in the basement at 43 Highland Street, and we had such wonderful, engaging discussions. We had the opportunity to meet together as teams. We met across grade levels, we met across content areas, and we looked at the basic foundational information we need to know about language and literacy. So we looked at phonics, phonology, word recognition skills. We examined vocabulary, what that means to our instructional practices. And we also looked at pragmatics and comprehension. So at the middle school level, we really embarked on something quite new by, for us, by looking at across content areas, math, science, ELA, social studies, what is it that we need to know? We're not trying to turn anyone into a reading teacher at those levels, teachers who teach content. What we were trying to do was get a basic understanding of language and literacy development, and what that knowledge necessary to allow kids to access the content areas. So the goals of our professional development from September through about March were to increase teacher knowledge, to look at diagnostic skills, how do you know what a child's response to your instruction means, and how can you respond to it? The common language, we tried to develop common language around problem-solving, children's learning difficulty. And we also looked at data, and how do we, in a consistent way, take that data and turn it into informed best practice in our classrooms? At the 7th and 8th grade, we had the Keys to Literacy program with the same intention. We're looking at skills that kids need to be successful readers, writers, and users of language. So with the Keys to Literacy, we looked at three primary skills. We looked at trying to identify the main idea, looking at note-taking, and what skills are involved in note-taking. And then we also looked at summarizing information from content area studies. At the forefront, à la professional level, professional development work we did this year was the needs of our English language learners and what that means to us as teachers. So the second question that I would think many of you would have is, you know, why do we engage in such a rigorous professional development schedule this year? Because it was rigorous, and many of you, I'm sure, felt the weight of leaving your classrooms, but it was for a purpose. And the purpose was really stemmed from the work I did last year. Last year, I started in Lowell, and I was in schools most every day. I listened, and listened, and listened. I listened to teachers, I listened to students, and I listened to administrators. And basically, what I heard was that there was an urgency to our work, and that there was a hunger for information about language and literacy. People did not feel like they had enough of a base to inform their instruction. So we set about this great brand design of professional development this year, with the goal of providing opportunities for getting information, for having professional conversations with our colleagues, being able to talk with our colleagues at grade level and across content areas. And the evidence of our work was a binder, and we all joke about the binder, but that binder is the physical evidence of what we did in those sessions. The binder is just a binder of activity sheets, if you don't know why you're doing what you're doing. And that's the intent of professional development. We have to be informed, we have to know why we're engaging in the activities we're engaging in with students. And so today, we're continuing the work, we're trying to bring our work from a theoretical level and a research level to that practical, pragmatic level in our classrooms, and what does it mean to us when we show up in that classroom every day? We want that binder to come alive. I don't want it to be another relic on the shelves. When I came to Lowell, I saw so many binders, and I don't want my binder to become one of the relics. I want it to be alive, I want it, when I'm long gone, I want that binder to still be a useful tool to youth 20 years from now. And so my third question, that I would expect all of us to say, okay, this sounds great, but what are the school structures in place? How are we going to do this work? Well, we have done so much system-wide this year to make this happen. We have, through the use of our funds and many different sources, we have developed professional learning communities across the district. We have had the opportunities to work within grade levels and across grade levels and across, within content areas. And both as veteran teachers and new teachers, we all know that every day we show up and we have to keep thinking, how am I going to hone my skills as a teacher? How am I going to deepen my knowledge? So through those professional learning communities and the professional development that we've provided this year in the district, I think we're in a great role, and we've got momentum, and we want to keep that momentum going. For today, what the tasks are, there are two tasks really for you as teachers. The first task is reflection, and that's always, I think, the best part about teaching, is thinking about your practice. What is it that you're doing, and how successful is it, and how can I get better at it? So the first thing, you've all received a reflection sheet, and at the top of the sheet, you'll see that it talks about instructional strategies. What instructional strategies from the professional development have you actually implemented in your classroom? I want you to talk to your colleagues about those strategies. What worked? What did you use? Who did you use it with and why? And then I want you to think about the outcomes. I want you to think about, what was my practice like? Did it change my practice? Did it change the academic outcomes for the students I worked with? And then think about motivation and engagement. Did it change the motivation and engagement of the students that you're working with? And then finally, the ticket to lead will be next steps for professional learning. We want to keep this ball rolling. And so we are listening to you. We want to know what you think will help you continue to improve your diagnostic skills, continue to deepen your knowledge about language, literacy, reading and writing across the curriculum. And so I thank you so much. I have learned so much from all of you this year. You've shared all your practices with me. I've just had a great time with that, and I hope today will be productive for you, and we really look forward to your responses. We want to respond to what your needs are. Thank you.
Ms. Larva?
Very nicely done with the video and informative. This actually, I guess, is a question for the superintendent. We did have on the calendar questions about doing early release for K through 8 on a regular basis for next year, and I realized that we didn't vote on it when we were approving the calendar. Would this be a time to bring that discussion back?
No.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you for the question. We did think that we wanted to be able to report out on today, and so we have reported out on what happened, but we would like to just get some feedback from our staff on this particular issue. And also, we will be bringing it forward with regards to, our past model of offering professional development has been to have many subs come into our classrooms and release our students. I did meet with the professional development people last week, just to go over those numbers again, and to see, you know, the elimination of that particular model, because we're looking for every dollar, and how that would be offset by this particular, by, you know, having half-days again. So we will be bringing it back to the committee, but in your, you know, in your budget, we are going to be recommending PED cuts that we feel will be able to be offset by half-days. So you'll be looking at it there in the budget, but you'll also be looking at it in a subcommittee meeting on this report.
Just a follow-up question. So will we be seeing that within the next month or so? I'm just concerned about getting information out to parents for next year so that they can be prepared for this.
Right. I'd like just to ask Deputy Franco, it's my understanding that we would be ready by the middle of June?
It is an agenda item in the next community partnership and curriculum subcommittee meeting, which I-
July 7th.
-which is June 7th. So that is on the agenda, so I will have a report, kind of synopsizing what we learned from our teachers today, and we'll be able to go forward from there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Madam Superintendent?
So just a point of clarification. So again, we're thinking, just because the numbers are so late with regards to our budget and the city budget, the city budget not coming out till June 1st, that the date of that meeting, we will have time to present this report, but it is reflected in the budget, a cut to PED with regards to the number of substitutes, because we won't need the number of substitutes if in fact we receive a half-day. Thank you.
Anything else on the report? Motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Conway to accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor indicate by saying aye to vote. Thank you. Next report, Student Service Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. In response to a request from committee member Martin at one of our Student Support Services Finance Subcommittee Meeting, where we reported out the way we spent our air funds, and we, in the area of Student Support Services, received $2 million from the federal government last year, and the committee, in its wisdom, voted to take half of that money and develop programs that students wouldn't leave the district. And Ms. Martin asked for a breakdown of the cost savings to date. Based on that, we gave you last year's numbers, but this is the update to that. And the number of, and I'll go through the different initiatives and the number of students affects staffing, cost of program, and cost of students if they were placed out per student, and the total cost. So at our middle school life skills class, there are nine students presently being served. It's, the program's being staffed by one teacher, one paraprofessional. To place these students out of district would cost approximately $66,000 per, sorry, the cost of our program is $66,000. The cost per student if they were placed out of the district is $36,000, with the total cost of $324,000. There were four pre-K PDD classes added to our system last year, serving a number, 29 students. That staffing requirements for that program, four teachers and 12 paraprofessionals. Cost for the program, $421,000. Cost per student to be placed out of the district, the range between $68,000 and $92,000, with the total cost for placing all of these students between $2 and almost $2.7 million. One high school adjustment class to serve the needs of 10 students, one teacher for the cost of the program, $46,000. The cost of placing these students out of district, $31,000. The total cost of placing all these students, again, $200,000. The total cost of placing all these students, again, $279,000. A total cost, a total cost of all of these programs in-house, because we educate our students here, for the amount of $533,456. A total cost for, if we were to place all of those students that were just mentioned in all those programs out of district, somewhere between two, almost $2.6 million and $3.3 million. Last year, the projection was less than that, but as you know, we did have significant increase in cost for tuition payments out of the district, so that cost has risen. So, I thank Assistant Superintendent Murphy for her fine work on this report. And again, it does highlight the fact that although the committee will need to find this money to, in our budget next year, it's, to not do so would significantly cost the district. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just want to thank the superintendent and her team, certainly for the report, but more importantly, for the work that went into making this a reality. I mean, this really is exactly in line with what ARF funding was meant to do. It was meant to foster innovation and give school districts the opportunity to make investments that, over the long term, would save them significant funds. And this was one of those kind of once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, and I'm extremely pleased to see how well we took advantage of this once-in-a-lifetime chance. And the prospect of looking at, you know, a little over $500,000 in year three of this, as opposed to $3.2 million, you know, that's exactly the kind of work that we can be very, very proud of here in the district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Leary?
Just real quick, I want to echo what Ms. Martin said, but also that this is another reason why you're looking two, three years down the road when you're budget planning, because we're going to have significant issues, because these funds are drying up essentially. But I want to thank you for the report, Madam Superintendent, and Assistant Superintendent Murphy, it's valuable information. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
I appreciate Committee Member Martin and Ms. Leary's comments. And I do have to say that the previous Superintendent, Carla Brooks-Bair, had said to me very early on that, you know, that we did need to focus on programming special education. And so, for the first year, we did listen to, we went around to our schools, and Assistant Superintendent Murphy and I really listened to what the concerns were around special education, and we developed these programs all year. And the committee, in the first year, as you recall, last November, voted, a year ago November, voted additional funds to address many of the issues. And then, we continued to build programs, not knowing when, in fact, or where the money would come from. And that's why, in part, because we did take a year of planning, not knowing where the money was going to come from, but when it came, we could use it very effectively, because we had done our homework in a very similar way that we have spent with regards to our professional development. So, that planning by Assistant Superintendent Murphy and her team has been proven to be very beneficial to the school department. Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary to accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Votes to vote. Charter School Update.
Thank you, Your Honor. Lowell Public Schools was contacted by email last Friday by Deputy Commissioner Jeff Wilson from the Department of Education, who is in the finance department there with regards to answering a request that we had with regards to funding the students who were coming from the charter school, and they would please give us an update on where we were with that particular situation. At the time, the school department, at the time that the charter school was proposed to cut, to be cut and closed, and students come back to Lowell Public, which we welcome all the students to Lowell Public, but we did have some concerns over, basically, because these students weren't in front of us, would additional monies follow these students? Because obviously, we have a lot of financial concerns. Based on the funding formula of the way it works with the state right now for charter schools and public schools, when students leave charter schools and come back to public school districts, there's a particular funding formula that's used. And the funding formula indicated to the department, and we were informed on Friday, that in fact, a total, using their numbers of 90 students, would be coming, returning to Lowell from the 7th and 8th grade of the charter school here in Lowell. However, that there would be no additional funds at this time, that in fact, the city would receive $100,000 less than they did last year. And again, it's wrapped up in a very complicated charter school funding formula. So, I did personally speak with the Associate Commissioner about this particular issue, and he said that they, and they continue to, work on this particular formula. We continue to work with the delegation to address the fact that this is a significant cost associated with educating the students who are coming in from the charter school, and that we need a funding formula fixed, or we need legislation changed to address this particular point. Right to date, it's important for the committee to know that I have been working this week with John Dakota on the numbers of students who have presently enrolled from the high school since, sorry, from the charter school since September of 2009. It's 48 students this year who are presently enrolled, so they're in our seats, in our classrooms. And for the 2010, 2011 school year, the breakdown by grade is in front of you. So, these students aren't in front of us right now, but they're registered to come into our system. And in the last column, it's the anticipated number of students in grades 7 and 8 that will be coming to us next year, but have not registered. Because the numbers in the email that we received that I forwarded to you did not match our numbers, we, I did have Mr. Dakota call the charter school, and also called the Associate Commissioner today to figure out the disparity, discrepancy between these numbers. And at this time, again, it has not been totally confirmed that all 95 students will be coming to Lowell Public, but that is the projection in the last column there. And as we go forward, you know, I will keep the committee updated, but this definitely remains a concern for us. The department is working with us, as well as the delegation. I do expect to hear, within the next five business days, some progress, some significant progress on this issue, and I am hopeful.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, then Mr. Conway.
Thank you very much. Certainly, having received the email, and I'm sure my colleagues share our surprise at the way this has worked out, particularly in light of our, I think, extreme clarity during our meeting with the Commissioner, his staff. I know the delegation was there and very supportive. This entire committee was there. There were representatives from the charter school. I mean, it was a very well-attended meeting, specifically on this issue. And as I say, we could not have been more clear, as we articulated our concerns regarding the way our annual census was going to put us behind the eight ball. That the fact that they would be calculating our formula based on, you know, basically information that was a year out of date, traditionally, that's not a big deal, because of the very stable populations that most school districts have, ours included. This is an extreme situation, and we, I think, spoke very directly to that. More importantly, my surprise comes from the fact that the response from the representatives, from the Commissioner, from his staff, were, I believe, equally clear that the money would follow the students, that there was a recognition that this was a school in crisis, that they were working to, I mean, at that point, there wasn't even any, I don't think, reasonable expectation that they were going to remain open at all. I mean, it was still on the table at that point that they would close entirely. The Commissioner, you know, in the interim, made the choice that, you know, of bringing down the population there, and even more so, not even bringing the entire middle school population to the public schools in one fell swoop, spreading it over two years. That's very reasonable. It's very, as reasonable as it can be. I think it's a logical choice, and it's one that puts the needs of students, as well as the capacity of institutions at the forefront. To make this kind of change without those kinds of supports, to just simply be planning to drop, you know, we're talking about a lot of different numbers, you know, over, 190 was, was kind of, I think, the total that we're-
Correct.
-in that area. You know, that's almost the size of the Moody School population-
Correct.
-a whole school. To drop that number of students without the financial resources, and, you know, dare I say, less. I mean, it is one thing to have made the assurance that the money would come, not only is it not coming, we're getting less. I mean, I don't understand how this formula has been derived. I have great faith in, certainly as a committee, working with our delegation, working with the administration, working with the city, in our ability to be, continue to be extremely clear about what we expect, what was told to us, and that we expect that that is going to be what happens. And I certainly, I know, can pledge all of our efforts towards making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Just very briefly, I just want to echo what Ms. Martin said, because again, we're all at that meeting, and all the key players, and I know, and we all know, that Madam Superintendent was very clear, and I think asked the question a couple of different ways, paraphrase it, to make sure that that money was going to take place, it was going to follow, and I believe the, was it the Commissioner said, "It's a definite, that's not a problem." And then, to see that it is a problem, and again, it's already, it's putting our system in harm's way, a system that's already strained, and I congratulate the superintendent for following up, and I'm sure it's extremely frustrating to be dealing with a situation like this, but again, I, we all thank you for that, the follow-up on it, and hopefully, between yourself and the delegation, we can put this together and get the monies that was promised to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a few questions through you to the superintendent. If I look at the chart, where you have the students that registered since September '09, that number 48-
Yes.
-am I correct in assuming that those students met the October 1 enrollment date then? Right?
Not necessarily. Those are students who came in all, at different months. I can get that breakdown for you, too, but that's, they are registered and are with us right now. So, they may have came in December, they-
Okay.
Hopefully, they came September 30th, but more likely than not, they came later and even after the announcement.
Okay. Because here's where I'm going with that. If I, if we look at the 48 plus the 111, right, and then you add the 95 that's due to come, that's 254 students total. Now, I'm just ballparking it at 10,000 a student, all right? So, that's over $2 million.
Correct.
Okay? Actually, it's 2.5 million. And so, here's the big question. Is that money factored into the budget that you're presenting us tonight?
No.
Okay, so, assuming we get the money that we should get that follows these students, as we were all witnesses to the Commissioner, you know, promising us, and it's the fair thing to do, the money should go with the student, because we now have the responsibility of educating those students. I'm happy for that responsibility. But assuming we get that money, that's another $2.5 million, about. Is that correct?
Madam Superintendent?
Again, I really don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment. That's with regards to, that's the formula they're going to use? And I, yes, if they were in front of us on October 1st, that would be a good number to pick, $10,000 per student, and that math would work. But again, given, I do not want to send the wrong message that, one, that would be the number that they would even consider. I don't know. And obviously, that's what we're going to ask, and, you know, we're going to go after that. But again, I don't want, you know, people to think that, okay, you know, that the budget problem is solved if we get this 2.5 million. I just want to put that out there, that-
I just, to be clear, I recognize that 2.5 million does not solve our budget problem, but it certainly goes a long way. There's a lot of jobs-
Right.
-that 2.5 million will cover, and I would be, I'm hot on that trail to get that money out of the state. Thank you.
Superintendent Scott?
I didn't mean to imply that you thought it would solve all of our problems, but I still want to keep the heat on other areas so that, you know, everybody brings something to the table. That was all. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Through you, the superintendent, would you need us to do anything at this point? Do you want us to vote on a, something, send a letter, or send a something, or do we need to take a vote demanding the money? You know? Do you need us to send some sort of a message by voting?
That's an interesting suggestion.
Madam Superintendent?
Can I ask Assistant Superintendent Lang a question about that? Mr. Lang, would that help?
I honestly don't know.
I know.
I don't think it would hurt. I mean-
Wouldn't hurt, I guess, Mr. Lang.
Everybody's voting to boycott Arizona. We can, we can vote to send a letter to, to ask for our fair share of money, and I'm inspired by Mr. Conway's speech night, so let's do it.
It can't, it can't hurt.
It can't hurt.
Can't hurt? So, I, do we need a suspension of rules or anything? I make a motion that we send a letter-
You make a motion, a suspension of the rules.
Okay.
Suspend the rules.
By Mr. Leary, second by Mr. Leahy to take up the motion of sending a letter. All those in favor, the suspension, indicate by saying aye. Vote. Mr. Leahy?
We, yeah, we make a motion that we ask-
Would you like to use the gavel?
Superintendent would use the gavel, would send a letter on behalf of the school committee, you know?
Requesting them?
Yeah, I'd like to say demanding, but I don't want to-
To whom? To whom? Who do you want the letter sent to?
It's fine. It'll be worded appropriately.
They keep their promise and follow, the money should follow the students.
And I would even reference the meeting we had at the May as we said.
Sure, and reference the meeting.
Correct. Second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Thank you.
And what was the date of that meeting? I should put the date in there.
I can get the exact date for you tomorrow, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Your Honor.
That's okay. Motion by Ms. Larva, second by Mr. Arti to accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Vote. Next item, Personnel Report.
The Personnel Report of May 19, 2010, as presented.
Move approval by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Vote to vote. List of eligible teachers. Move approval by Mr. Leary, second by Ms. Larva. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Vote to vote. Thank you. Under, under new business, superintendent's recommended FY 11 budget.
Thank you, Your Honor. If it's all right, I'll just give Assistant Superintendent Lang just a minute to pass out the binders.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to give a brief overview of the budget, and then I will ask Assistant Superintendent Lang to take us through our binders. They're laid out slightly different this year, in part because we've included also the Title I and the various grants, so we just wanted to walk through the document with you so that we're all clear on where the information is, to save you time later. But I'll start with just giving a few comments with regards to the work that's been done over the last six months. The school committee and the administration have been analyzing the budget in anticipation of a $7 to $9 million shortfall for the past six months. At this time, that projected shortfall has not changed, and we still do not have firm numbers from the state or the city. We have spent many hours considering various cuts, beginning at the cabinet level, and then from the pre-K8 and the high school levels. We have worked closely with our building-based administrators as we have gone through this very difficult process. We have had numerous financial subcommittee meetings analyzing what additional cuts would mean to the K8 level, the high school, student support services, curriculum and instruction, and the district office. After significant deliberation with the staff, the school committee, the following recommendations, which I must add, fall drastically short of the anticipated deficit. They're being made in the context of a school district that has suffered six years of cuts, over 500 positions lost, and many programs. As well, next year, we are welcoming hundreds of refugee students from all over the world and from the charter school. Being cognizant of the very difficult financial times we face, I am putting forward at this time a realistic $4 million reduction from the school department's budget, because as, to recommend anymore at this time, in my professional opinion, would do permanent damage to the district. But first, I'd like to give you just a brief history on how we've made the cuts in the past, so that we can make some sense out of the recommendations that are being made tonight, in particular, at the K8 level. The building principals in the past were given the directive to cut- through eight. The recommendations being put forward is that the staffing core at all of our K8 schools will consist of a principal, an assistant principal, classroom teachers, a music program, art, physical education, and a library aide in order to keep all of our libraries open. We can no longer afford the different staffing models that have existed across the system. Given our limited resources, we need to streamline all of the programmatic offerings to ensure the core program is of the highest quality. The cabinet's goal was to ensure that staffing levels and programs were equitably distributed across all of our schools. We have remet with our K8 principals to share this rationale with them. The response from them has been supportive of this position. The proposed cut for the K8 level at this time is two-point-five million. And we'll go over the details a little bit more in just a minute. The proposed cuts at the high school have also been discussed at many financial subcommittee meetings and staff meetings. The cuts before us will definitely impact the high school, but given the financial situation we find ourselves in this year and the forecast for next, I believe the proposed cut for the high school of one-point-five million is equitable at this time based on larger class sizes and the lack of resources at the K8 level. The proposed cut at the high school would result in the elimination of thirteen teachers, raising the average class size at the high school to twenty-three. It should be noted that I have made tiered cuts for the committee to examine in your binders, but do not feel it is possible to go beyond the Tier One cut that is proposed at this time for K8 and the high school without doing permanent damage to our entire system. Assistant Superintendent Lang, you'd like to go over the binder?
Sure. There's a few changes I'd like to walk you through this year, just as you start reviewing the budget. We just went through the budget narrative, and when you turn to the next section on the budget recommendations, to give you just a sense, level-wise, what we've done is Page One breaks down the recommendations at the elementary level. So you can see a dollar savings as well as a elimination in thirty-five-and-a-half FTE positions. So these are all the elementary level in their alphabetical order by school, but they are together as a group in a category. Page Two is a look at the middle school recommended reductions, again alphabetically by school as a group, grades five through eight, and those add up to thirteen positions and a little under a million dollars in savings at that level. Excuse me. Page Three takes a look at the high school recommended reductions, and seventeen positions for just about a million and a half dollars at that level. When you turn the page to four, five, and six, these actually are the same cuts listed on one, two, and three, but as we've done in the past, I put them in order as they'll appear through the budget book. So when we go page by page, you'll actually be referring to Pages three, four, I'm sorry, four, five, and six. So if you're going to make notes, I would make them on four, five, and six as opposed to one, two, and three. And don't be surprised if you see something twice, it's just because this is the cumulative effect of the first three pages. The next section of the budget is the system-wide budget. And when we rolled all of our costs forward for fiscal year eleven, we had known step and lane changes were pretty much our only salary increases. We did approve a contract tonight that had a minimal increase in it cost-wise, but all of our other contracts are not budgeted with any increase. The only thing we have accounted for are step and lane changes. We had a approximately ten percent increase in employee health insurance, which was about a million and a half dollars. And then, as we go through the budget, there are some areas, different contractual increases that were obligated to in regular ed and special education transportation, so those have all been rolled in and accounted for. So the actual, for a level service budget we've talked about in the past, carryover from FY-10 to 11 would be about two-and-a-half billion dollars or one-point-eight percent. And that comes to one-hundred-and-forty-one-point-two million dollars. And what we know so far through the House budget is the, the Chapter 70 state aid figure, one-fourteen-four-nine-five, is the best figure to go with at this time. When the Senate number comes out, obviously, as we're going through this over the next few weeks, we'll revise as we need to, but that seems to be the best number. The House budget also included two-point-two million dollars in stimulus money. You'll recall last year, we received three-point-six-nine-five million. The House budget includes two-point-two for us. So the IDEA, which is for special ed services, and the Title I funding, those were set aside. We received half the funding last year and then half the funding this year. So those two numbers are known. Those are the only two real solid numbers in the budget at this point. Taking a look at the city and how we actually arrived at the seven-to-nine million dollar gap that we've been talking about, if you take a look at the city's contribution to the law schools in fiscal ten, the appropriation was one-hundred-and-thirty-two-nine-fifty-oh-eighty-nine. We received one-hundred-and-seventeen-four-eighty-four-one-hundred in Chapter 78, which left a cash balance of the fifteen-four-sixty-five. What we've been using is a level-funded city cash contribution as we've been building our budget. So when you move the fifteen-four-sixty-five-ninety-eighty-nine up as a revenue source, that leaves a budget shortfall of just under seven million dollars, six-point-nine million. Now, we get to the nine-million-dollar shortfall in the event that the ARRA state fiscal stabilization money doesn't come through. While the House budget did include it, it's actually up to the Governor to allocate that funding. So that is still the two-point-two million that's in play, and that's why our budget has varied from the seven-to-nine million dollar shortfall. But we're building it based on, at this point, the latest numbers that are out of the House budget, so we have that shortfall of seven million dollars. As we go through the budget process, it'll be this section, I believe it's twenty-eight pages, that these are the sections we'll actually go through. So this is the main section to work on and to review and prepare questions for me if you'd like. The next three sections, the elementary, middle, all high school, and actually, the alternative schools, gives you a snapshot in time today as far as FTE and spending by, by school and by employee category. In the back of the middle school section, there's a purple sheet, and just to separate the K-8 schools, we don't have a separate tab for K-8, they fall under the middle schools for the budget purposes. Then you have your alternative section, and you move into the staff salary book. Now, the staff salary book, just to remind you, is all of the positions that are in the local operating budget, and this year includes all of our local funding sources plus the half-matches from the IDEA and the Title I stimulus money. So those positions are all considered local budget positions, and they're included within this section of the budget. And this is a crosswalk up to the main system-wide budget. So if you look in Section Two on Page One, for instance, you can see that's the school committee stipends, six members, thirty-six thousand dollars, and that's six members on six FTE and thirty-six thousand come right from that section. So as you're going through it, it goes in order of the budget book pages one through twenty-eight. A new section for you this year, we talked about, it's been a lot of fun putting the budget together this year, is a grant listing of employees. So we have our, all of our local-funded positions are in the first section, Pages one through forty-nine. And then again, you have a purple insert just to separate it for you, and you have a listing of all the school department employees that are being paid on grants, what grant is actually paying them, and the little fund code at the end is really just for my purposes, but they're all listed for you as well. And they're broken again by funding category and then sorted by school, just so you can take a look at where all of your grant-funded employees are coming. We'll have more conversations about the way we're actually spending our grant monies, ARRA, and just other district allocations in probably the end of June, July, and August, because we still don't actually have all of our allocations from the state. So that's going to take still a few months for them to roll in, but I want you to have the complete picture of all staff in the school department when we're going through this budget process. We know that we're receiving reductions, and significant reductions, to Title I, II, III, and V. So those positions are, we're going to have some eliminations even outside of the local operating budget that we're, that we're looking at. The last section, you have another purple tab, and then at Page Fifty-Six, what I did for you here is actually break down all school department employees, excuse me, by program location, whether they're local-funded or they're grant-funded. You won't actually use this section during any part of the budget deliberations, but if you want to get a picture of, say, the, the Bailey School is on Page Fifty-Seven. So if you want to see actually every single employee who works at the Bailey School, whether they're local-budget funded, grant-budget funded, this would be the page to look at. And it just, it's two pages long. And again, this is everyone, your grants, your local, any kind of revolving fund employees, they're all listed here. And if we look at the Bailey, just as an example, just to show you the level of budget cuts we're at, we have a principal, an assistant principal, a school clerk, a preschool teacher. It's a four-strand school, so you'd expect to see four kindergarten teachers. There are sixteen elementary teachers because you have two teachers per grade level. There's a math resource teacher. You have paraprofessionals that help at the various grade levels. We're going to retain the core of art, music, and phys ed. They have a parent liaison that's funded through the Title I grant. You would then have special ed staff. They would have four special ed teachers that are dedicated, pretty much one per grade level, and then the Bailey School had picked up two district-wide programs this year, so they have two special ed teachers for that. The paraprofessionals are associated with the special ed programs, and library media specialist, library aide, social worker, custodians, and a literacy specialist. Now, when we get to the reductions at the elementary level, the Superintendent may speak more to this, the consistent reduction across the board has been within the libraries, the library media specialist positions. So you'll see, this is the snapshot in time of today, who is in that particular building, but when you look up at the budget reduction section, you'll see that that particular position was recommended to be eliminated. So it pretty much is stripping down the elementary schools to the bare-bone operating of just your core administrative staff, the classroom teacher, the paraprofessionals, which are in direct support of the special ed programming, and then we're retaining a phys ed, a music, and an art teacher, and those are your only three allied art individuals that give any flexibility in the schedule that will remain after this, these proposed budget cuts. So those individuals are used to provide the common planning time, I'm sorry, not the common planning, the prep time within the, within the teacher's schedule. But I know questions have come up in the past about, you know, I know a particular person works in a school, but why aren't they in the budget? Well, they might have been on a grant or vice versa, that you were looking on the local, and they were on the grant. So this section would be helpful for you to just get a complete snapshot of a particular school or a particular location and who is, who's actually working there and who's, who's being paid from that. Again, not a section that we'll go through during the budget deliberations, I'll certainly answer any questions for you. The two main sections to key in on are, again, the recommended budget reductions, Pages four, five, and six, because they go in budget per quarter, as well as the system-wide budget. So as you review this over the next coming days, you'll be forwarded with more reports and information from my office just to help you in your decision-making, but please feel free to call, send an email if you're looking for anything specific for clarification or just in anticipation of next Thursday evening's meeting. The sooner I get the heads-up of something you're looking for, the easier it is for me to just provide it to you ahead of time so that we can then have the discussion on Thursday night, and I don't have to go back after Thursday's night meeting and get something for you and have to then wait for another session.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Do we have any questions at this point? Mr. Arti?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Mr. Lang. When we're seeing elimination in music teachers, for instance, we went from maybe thirteen-point-four, I think this might have been the middle school level, to ten, or is that, I mean, if I hear the Superintendent correctly, we are going to have music in all our schools, so how are we coming up with those kinds of reductions then?
The, at the elementary level, and actually, the middle school level too, every school has at least, well, at the elementary level, just to be clear, it's one music, one phys ed, one art in each building, period. At the middle school level, because they have more strands, they're typically, they're at least a six-strand school, I think we may even have a seven, they had multiple, they had two art, some had two phys ed, two music. Some of the schools, when they're actually reaching their cut this year, that's been, due to necessity, they're having to eliminate one of the extra allied arts, so they'd be going, say, from two music down to one, or two art down to one. Each middle school is still going to retain that particular subject, the kids will just have less, less of it.
Thank you. Mr. Larry?
Thank you. And I want to thank the administration for going through the hard work for the past year, everyone for putting this together. Without going through, I mean, we've lived through a lot of multiple finance subcommittee meetings, you know, a lot of other subcommittees regarding the budget. And we know with massive changes have taken place, and more changes have taken place again in this booklet that we haven't had a chance to digest. But I do want to, I just want to support the Superintendent with her thought process of the four-million-dollar reduction as opposed to anything higher at this point, and I concur with her professional opinion that that's, even the four million is a significant cut when you take into effect, last year alone, there was eight-million-dollar in cuts to the system. I forgot the Title I cuts last year, it was around a million last year, so the eight-million-dollar budget cut is not telling the entire story. Every year I've been on the committee, I've been on four-and-a-half years, we've had multiple cuts. I don't want to get into it tonight, but I think we need to challenge our city side folks in terms of seeking more money. But what I have to articulate here, and it's not going to get me a round of applause, is that our unions need to have to step up to the plate as well. It's not a glass house, we are in a glass house here. We have to work together to ensure the success. It's not just all the city, it's just not the school department, it's both of us together. The school committee will definitely work hard and aggressively work with the city side. I know the Mayor will do his best to work on that side. I think the city manager has acknowledged he's going to try to do his best. And we'll have our arguments and disputes, but we have to acknowledge that this is reciprocal. This isn't just a one-sided issue. I think the school committee articulated, we have, we're going to have a very articulate letter to the state regarding the hundred-thousand-dollar issue, or the additional money issue about the students coming from the charter school. We've taken a motion tonight that the committee supports regarding the issue about funding increases at the greater vocational technical schools opposed to other regular ed schools. So I think we're doing the right thing, I just think this has got to be a shared experience. And I know it's not a popular thing to say, but it has to be shared. This isn't us versus them, this is us, and us is the city, us is the school department, us is the employees in the school department, us is the unions in the school department, it's everybody. And if we all don't come together, we are in big trouble as a community. You know, we don't need to have mass flight of the middle class out of the city because we are not taking care of one of the biggest investments in the city, the school department. However, that's not one side, it's everybody. I want to thank the Superintendent again, it'll be, you know, obviously, nobody wants to go through and cut good, hard-working people, good, hard-working, successful people, hard-working's nice, but a lot of people are pretty successful dealing with the dynamic that they have to deal with in and out in every day. So again, I thank you, I support your initial, your initial numbers, I think they're respectful of the reality of what we're facing. I think it'll be a challenge for the city and the school department to work together to meet those numbers, but we need our people there with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I also want to congratulate and applaud the Superintendent for coming up with a figure of four, of four million dollars, because I think that, again, when we're talking about the seven and eight and nine million dollars, which I think is absolutely crazy, I think that when we're looking at the four million dollars and between the Superintendent and staff coming up with something that's a little bit more realistic, and needless to say, the four million dollars is still going to be devastating to the, to the school system, but I certainly back up the Superintendent in that number. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the FY-11 budget document and refer same to the public hearing scheduled for May 27th at 7:00 P.M. And we also have scheduled a second public hearing for June 1st at seven, is it June 1st? June 1st at seven. I thought, Mr. Arti said June 2nd, but I thought it was June 1st at 7:00 P.M. Madam Superintendent?
Your Honor, could I just make one last comment at whatever is appropriate to do so?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I just would like to follow up on Committee Member Leary, and actually, Ms. Martin had mentioned at the last meeting that we do, and we are very shortly going to have to look at other tiers of cuts that we have looked at over the last six months if everybody doesn't come to the table. You know, the proposal I have in front of you, I think, is a responsible number, but to go any further is going to do damage that is going to take years, if ever, to fix. And we do reach out to our unions, we continue to do that, to the city. We did meet with the city manager yesterday, we shared with him all of these numbers, it's
mentioned at the last meeting that we do, and we are very shortly going to have to look at other tiers of cuts that we have looked at over the last six months if everybody doesn't come to the table. You know, the proposal I have in front of you, I think, is a responsible number, but to go any further is going to do damage that is going to take years, if ever, to fix. And we do reach out to our unions, we continue to do that, to the city. We did meet with the city manager yesterday. We shared with him all of these numbers. It's important the community knows that we had that conversation, and he knows right now the level of cuts that we will suffer. This will be seven years of cuts to Lowell Public Schools. There is no rabbit left in the hat. Some of the conversation that's occurred here on the floor tonight just, I think, demonstrates, if nothing else, how difficult the cuts are past 4 million. There are no good answers. The decisions we're going to have to make after 4 million are, we don't like this, we don't like this, we don't like this, pick our poison. And really, as we go forward past this point, I do want the unions and I want the city to know it's our responsibility to clearly communicate the good work that's been done for decades at Lowell Public Schools, and we're very proud of it. It's an honor to be your superintendent, but it is my job to clearly communicate the harm that these cuts would result in. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Larry, second by Ms. Doherty, to accept the budget book as presented and refer the same to public hearing scheduled for May 27th at 7:00 P.M. and June 1st at 7:00 P.M. scheduled for here in the city council chambers. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, vote. Thank you. Next item on the new business, cancellation of the June 2nd, 2010 regularly scheduled school committee meeting because of the Lowell High School graduation exercises. Motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Leahy. Any discussion? I believe we all received the time over at the Songus Center for the county medalists, and then the graduation is at 6 o'clock. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, vote. Convention conference requests, we have two this evening. The first, Susan Turkott Gabriel Greenwich School Music and String Specialist, who take a professional, to take a professional day to attend a national music conference from Friday, May 28th to Monday, May 31st, 2010, in Minneapolis. Teacher will cover all expenses. Cost for substitute teacher for one day, 100 dollars, to be paid by Ed Vestas' grant. Motion to, motion approved by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Leahy. Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. The second item, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Can I just make a comment on this? I just, it should be noted, too, that the first request by the Greenwich Music teacher that she's going to cover her own expenses, so that should be acknowledged because, you know, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. The second request from Dr. Phaila Che, Specialist for Community Outreach along with six Lowell Public School staff, Stephen Gross, Stocklossa School Principal, Megan Lofflin, Wang teacher, David Grinier, Robinson teacher, Tricia Gabor, Lowell High School teacher, and Sarah McPhee, Merklin teacher, to attend the Fulbright Hayes Group Study Abroad Project in Cambodia from Thursday, July 8th through Wednesday, August 4th, 2010. This project will be paid for by the Fulbright Hayes Grant. With approval by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Larry. Any discussion? Ms. Lariva?
Yes. That's my understanding, so correct?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. Under Communications, again, Lowell Telecommunications, Channel 10, broadcast of school committee meetings live on the first and third Wednesday of the month, Thursdays at 6:00 P.M., Saturdays, Sundays at 2:00 P.M., Tuesdays at 10:00 A.M. Accepted communication placed on file by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Lariva. Thank you. Professional personnel. Civil Service, we do have a letter from Mike Sheehan requesting that the members of GLU hereby request to donate sick leave back, sick leave days to the following building custodian, John Diamondopolis Botlet School, 10 days. Thank you for your attention to this, to this matter. Motion to accept by Mr. Larry, second by Ms. Lariva.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Ms. Lariva?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Millinazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the committee? If I could just, my colleagues would permit me, I did have an opportunity to see the PSA announcement on Fox 25 this evening that our student, Ryan Palmer, I believe, from Lowell High School, actually won first place for a PSA on drunk driving and being a responsible young adult, so congratulations to Ryan. And for those of you that want to see it, you can go on Fox News on the Internet and find your way to the PSA. It's very well done, so congratulations.
Just a quick statement, maybe if I just, I just want to recognize the crew team in terms of their, they had a crew, I would call it a meet, I guess, this past weekend, and, you know, not just this meet they had this past weekend, but if you want to look for how to plan to do something successfully, the crew team and the coaches, the staff, the parents that go along with that, they're not only raising money to support their own sports program, but they're starting to raise money and awareness and economic, becoming an economic powerhouse in the city. They're connecting with the U.S. Rowing Club and associations. I'm not familiar too much with crewing, other than looking at the head of the Charles and occasionally seeing them on the Merrimack River, but you're looking at raising for the hotels and restaurants and other types of venues in the city. These guys are doing it, doing it the right way. And not only that, they're beginning, they could easily be self-sustaining and then some. So I just want to give kudos to them, and they had a big event this weekend, and thank them for being innovative and thinking, and being, like, solving issues with solutions. And not only that, but being a solid ambassador to the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Well put. Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Good evening. Thank you very much.